All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. We have a great crowd tonight. And I would ask you, board members, to please look at the agendas before you and let us know if you'd like to make a motion that we approve this agenda for the next meeting or make any changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda by removing Policy 2.400 revenue.
Okay. Got a motion to remove the approval of revised Policy 2.400 from the agenda? Anything else to your motion? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, with that removed, do I hear a motion that we approve this agenda as modified?
So don't want to...
Okay, got a motion? Can I call that a second? All right. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. All right, well, if you'll join me, please, and we will pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, our board policy, we have a board policy on the election of officers, which says that we shall do so each December. So I will turn over the meeting at this point to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will be seeking nominations at this time for the position of board chairperson. Do I hear any nominations?
Nominate Mark Clark.
I hear a nomination for Mark Clark.
Second?
We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? All in favor of making Mark Clark chairman of the board?
It's hard.
Please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, thank you again. It's a joy to work with this board. I appreciate your continued confidence, I really do. The board now be open for a motion for someone to serve as vice chairman of our school board.
Nominate, make a motion, I'll nominate Tom Holland.
Okay. Mr. Holland?
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Any other nominations? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Well, that having been taken care of, we'll move on with the agenda. We had emailed to us, board members, the minutes to our regular board meeting on November 6th, so the board be open for a motion that will approve those minutes subject to any corrections that you note.
I'm going to vote a prior.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. We also had emailed out today disbursements for the month of November, so if you haven't had a chance, feel free to take a moment and review those disbursements for the month. And ask any questions to Ms. Williams. Okay, have a motion to approve disbursements for November?
Second.
And second? Any discussion or questions about the disbursements? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Principals' reports from Ralph Askins. Ms. Baker? You brought a friend?
Yes, I did. I have Ms. Jordan Sullivan here tonight to give the report for Ralph Askins.
Awesome. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Sullivan. I'm in 5th grade at Ralph Askins School. I want to let you know a few exciting things that have been going on at my school. We would like to thank the 45 men who came out for the meet and greet at Askins on November 18th. It was a successful way to start the day. Thank you to Officer Ivy for arranging this. We had around 500 visitors at our Thanksgiving lunch last month. It was good to see all of the parents, grandparents, family, and friends visiting with the students at Askins. Thank you to the cafeteria staff and Ms. Brittany Barnett for all of their hard work at putting the event together. Around 86 angels were adopted from Ralph Askins to provide Christmas for. We would like to thank the teachers, staff, and community members for helping make this a possibility. Upcoming, our kindergarten students will be singing Christmas carols to family and friends on Monday, December 18th, at 8:15 in the main gym. We would like to invite you to join us on this day. It will last around 20 to 30 minutes. Before I end, I would like to tell you my favorite things about Ralph Askins. I enjoy being a part of the morning show, student ambassador, and Beta Club. I love getting to see my friends every day, and I love reading books at the school library, and especially the Harry Potter series. Lastly, I would like to thank my teachers who got me where I am today. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce anyone who's with you? Awesome, welcome. Thank you for being here and for your trust in our school system. We appreciate you.
She's with her mother, Stephanie, who's a teacher at Ralph Askins, valued member of our tiger family, and her little sister, Taylor.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Great report. Really well-spoken young lady. Thank you. All right, thanks. Mr. McCormick from Fayetteville Middle School.
All right, we have Ms. Eliza and Ms. Kennedy here to give our report tonight.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be letting you guys know about some things we have going on the month of December for FMS.
This week, we have our Christmas band concert Thursday, December 7th, at FHS at 7:00 P.M. We will be playing our favorites along with some takes on some old classics.
December 12th will be our Behavior Rewards field trip. Students earn the trip by limiting the amount of QRs they receive each nine weeks. For positive reinforcement, we will be taking groups to Telahoma to bowl. We look forward to enjoying the day.
December 14th and 15th, we will be the Christmas production for FMS Theater Department. Last month, you received a flyer in your packets, but as a reminder, those performances will be held at 6:30 each night in the FMS gym. December 18th will be the 8th grade night for our boys and girls basketball players. We will recognize them and their parents that night at 5:00 P.M.
Finally, we would like to tell everyone about the toy drive at FMS right now as our Beta Club's service project. We have partnered with the Fayetteville Fire Department to help them collect toys for those in need during the holidays. Currently, Beta members are working on bringing in toys so that everyone's holiday is a little bit brighter this year. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Well done. Before you leave, could you remind me the band concert nomination?
It's this Thursday, the 7th.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, so at that, what time does that?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M., okay. All right, thank you. And would you like to introduce any family members who might be with you? Understood? All right. We'll just move this right along.
Best part of FMS, you get to see me every day, right?
That's right.
That's about the worst part.
So, well done, ladies. Thank you all for sharing that report. Lots happening. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perrin is here from FHS, and it is, I saw on the Coach Johnson posted today, am I stealing anything you're going to talk about?
No, sir.
It's championship week, right, weekend and whatnot, and it was three years ago today that Fayetteville High School won our first football championship, state championship, was three years ago today, which is kind of a historic moment in the history of Fayetteville High School. So, come along.
So, I've got Vincent Rulander here, who's the treasurer of our Beta Club, and he's going to report on the competition that they had, the state competition.
Yeah.
So...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vincent Rulander, and I am the treasurer of our Beta Club. Recently, we attended the Tennessee State Beta Convention in Nashville, Tennessee. We competed in public speaking, onsite drawing, and different visual arts competitions. We even had a winner, Aiden Young, for his visual arts competition. We attended two general sessions where we heard from keynote speakers, saw different performances, and heard from retiring state officers. Some of my favorite performances were the a cappella groups and the different skits from other schools. Our advisors were Ms. Benash and Ms. Childers. Ms. Benash was able to judge the living literature competition, which will help us next year to plan our skit. Judging is now online, so students like myself are able to view their scores and get feedback on how to improve along with what they did well. Overall, it was a great experience for everyone in attendance, and the Beta Club could not be more grateful for the support we received from our amazing school board. Thank you all.
Well done, as always. Would you like to introduce your guests, family members?
My mom was...
There she is. Thanks for that great report, and we are really proud of all that Beta Club does to represent us and accomplish the things you're doing. Great job. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Did we have any members of the public register to speak tonight? Okay, well, we'll move along to our supervisors' reports. Ms. Dotson?
So, I want to start out by telling you, Mr. Perrin has already left, that our principals are killing it. If you don't know, they're all through killing it. We talk about it daily. But, at the high school, something we're really excited about, I think it showed with you guys, we were going to do through Coach Murdock's class, we did some intensive ACT work with students before the senior retake. We have gotten that data back. Forty-two of our students in the senior class had a four-point gain either in a specific content area or in their composite score.
Wow, that's half the class.
Yeah, that's half the class. So, that's a big deal, and we did a reward system, and one of the things they found was when they asked them how many of them implemented a strategy, every single student that had a gain raised their hand. So, we're going to be doing some professional development on the second, where we're going to be doing the same type of prep work with the juniors with the goal that it's going to make a huge impact. So, the idea is to be strategic in the ACT. Other thing, want to thank you guys for coming out on a wet day to come to Aaron's to see the work that we've done there. You know, as I told them, we've invested $350,000, and I wanted you to see where the money went. So, you are going to be very blessed because I have a great opportunity for you, have spoken to Mr. Jones, and at the Alderman meeting, we're going to be also giving you guys an opportunity to have a glimpse into those before and after-school pictures and kind of let you know what we're doing there, because we're really proud of it. We think it's going to be very impactful to the community. Also, Mr. Gully, please know that, you know, Brian has been, since the very beginning of Fayetteville High School's inception, we've moved out of those portables, and he's got a great facility there, and we've got his things in place, and all of the items that we got, we're able to get for him out of the ESRA funds. So hopefully, if you're over there visiting, please take the opportunity to kind of go and see what he's got going on, and maybe down the road, we'll set up something where you can specifically go and visit him when everything's in place. That is everything that I have, unless you guys have some questions for me.
But, thank you again for that tour and all the work you did to get the grant, make this possible, because this is going to impact the community for decades.
And I'm going to be slipping out, because guess what? FMS girls are 10-0, and hopefully, I'm going to see them be 11-0 today.
That's right. That's right. It's very exciting. Thank you. Mr. Gibson?
He is not here. He's fallen in.
I'm sorry? Dr. Stiles?
I don't have anything to report this time.
Okay. All right. Ms. Jean?
I do not either.
No report, okay. Well, Mr. Young, would you like to share with us your audit results? Take, say, thirds, I turn findings, that's not a good thing. The audit is going to... Just your results.
Good evening. Before we get started into the audit, I always go over some required communication with you. Lisa's got a letter that's kind of got all this stuff in it on file. Nothing big this year. One thing is, we always have to identify any new accounting policies. There wasn't a new government accounting standard effective for this year, relates to subscription-based information technology arrangements, basically software, and it's kind of like a lease is for equipment, and standard, the crux of it is to want to make everybody put those obligations, report those as a liability. Now, we didn't really have any that we felt it would be necessary to do this for, because either, most often, our software at the school system are paid upfront, so there's no future obligation. And if there is, it's generally the ones we have are, could be terminated within 12 months at the most, so this is really looking for those that go beyond that, so we're fine on that. We also always point out that the financial statements include certain amounts that may be estimates, things like depreciation on fixed assets, probably the most significant estimates relate to pension liabilities and other post-employment benefits, and that hasn't changed, still the case. It also addresses misstatements. We proposed adjustments for anything except insignificant ones. The most significant ones we have this year that are, and these are all included in the financial statements, related to, we accrued, and I'll probably talk about this a little bit more, we proposed an adjustment to accrue FEMA grant revenue. We had incurred costs on the FEMA project, and I know we didn't have the actual grant in hand, may still not have it actually in hand, but we still feel confident that it's coming in. So, we accrued or proposed an accrual to record the grant share of that. We also proposed adjustments, the next, the other one that would be fairly significant related to the Snyder electrical improvement work, we proposed an adjustment, get those costs, you know, it's kind of how that's working, it flows through an escrow account outside of the school system's bank account, and so we proposed getting that on the books, in the financial statements at least, and it is reflected, and of course, we've got to report that obligation, that lease obligation, and I think we've already, we made the first payment against that, I think, with this fiscal year, even though we hadn't brought all the funds yet, spending all what they required us to start making the payback. That's essentially it on that. We'll get into the audit itself. Now, the big book we're going to focus on here for a moment, the audit went very well, the results are good. Our opinion on the financial statements, which is the primary reason for the audit, is unmodified, meaning we feel the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is a government, or this audit is under government auditing standards, which also requires that we report on any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, which we didn't have any to report. We also required to report on compliance. There is one finding, compliance finding related to expenditures exceeding budget on a couple of line items. I think one was just an oversight, and the other, I think there was probably some confusion on whether we actually needed to budget for transfers or not. We confirmed with the state that we do, and so, but those are not really big things, just, there's only two items there. Lastly, on the, we always are required to have a single audit here because of the amount of federal money that flows through. That, and I guess I should have pointed out, if you, the audit, the report on the financial statements is upfront, very first thing, pages 1 through 3. On the audit, the report on internal control and compliance is toward the back of the book, starts page 80 and 81. Lastly, we do a single, what's called a single audit, that reports on the school system's compliance with requirements of federal programs. Our opinion on that audit is unmodified as well, feel the school system complies in all material respects with the requirements of its major programs. And for this year, the major, the programs audited as major, or the ESRA program, which we audited it last year as well, but we can't really get around it because it's considered a higher-risk program. And we also audited this year as major the USDA child attrition programs. Again, both opinion on both those unmodified, no findings related to internal control or compliance, so very good there. As far as what you see in front of you, I think it's pretty similar to what you've seen in the past. The, our report, our opinion starts it off, and then we've got management's discussion and analysis. The basic financial statements would start on pages 10 and 11, that's the government-wide statements, and that's immediately followed by the fund statements. Then the footnotes start on page 17, required supplementary information, this is just a lot of information related to pensions and other post-employment benefits, then other supplementary information starting on pages, on page 66. Then at the end is where we have what I just reported on the single audit and our report on the federal programs. Just, take just a moment, and I'm going to go into the funds, because I know that's what we focus on most of the time, what you all see every month. So, we'll talk about just a few things related to the fund, financial statements, just to point out a few things, the general fund, and if you want to kind of take a look, maybe on page 15 is where I'm focused on here. We ended the year in the general fund with a positive change in fund balance of $47,000, which was favorable compared to budget. Compared to last year, last year's had a positive change in fund balance in the general fund of about $552,000. So, we're down about $500,000 roughly in terms of the change. A few reasons, the main reasons driving that, we had less revenue from the state, roughly $300,000 or so from the state this year. We had more salary and benefits paid from the general fund this year than last year. Last year, a good bit of it was paid through ESCR. Okay? So, that got shifted over to the general fund, and also, that adjustment I spoke of a moment ago, related to the Snyder project, is pushing up both the expenditures as well as the revenues. If you notice, in other finance and sources and uses, there's capital leases issued, Million Six, that's where we see the money coming in, and you can see the expenditure up and capital outlay. So, the main things are the lower revenue from the state, more payroll dollars and benefit dollars paid from the general purpose fund this year. Any questions? Again, positive, a change in fund balance, and positive compared to where we were budgeted to be. We'll talk just a minute about the cafeteria fund, and I'm going to be pushing you back and forth, front to back of the book, because the book, the funds, this, the government standards require you to kind of focus on major funds, they're up front, we don't ignore the non-major funds, but they're in the back. So, we'll, on the cafeteria fund, which is a non-major, if you want to look about page 69, there's mathematical things that determine what's a major versus a non-major, but we ended the year with $140,000 positive change in fund balance. That's, again, favorable compared to budget. I think we were budgeted to be fairly neutral as far as the change. That's less than we ended the year last year. We had, in the FY '22, we had some additional USDA grants that we didn't have this year, supply chain management was one that I recall, and I'm pretty sure there was another one. But again, positive change in fund balance. I'll just point out, I know you're aware, you know, the last probably part of '20, then '21, '22, we operated under a waiver, USDA waiver, that allowed us to serve free meals to all the students. That's kind of over, but we implemented this year, the school system did, the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP, which still allows us to do that, so, and that's in effect for this year. Let's see. We'll talk just a minute about federal, the federal funds, or title funds, we call it we call it in the report, I'm gonna send you back to the front, page sixteen. This, since ESER came in the last few years, this is a major fund, so it's up front. The only thing I want to point out here is we, we've got two point nine million dollars, two million nine thirty-nine federal revenue flowing through this last fiscal year, that's off a little bit from the prior year, where we were about three point one million, down about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, there's some ups and downs. The biggest thing, though, was in the prior year, we had some additional money in Perkins Fund grant, I think a reserve grant in the prior year, that kind of boosted the prior year up a little bit, but ESER was up just a tad this year, title funds down a little bit, but Perkins was the one driving the biggest part of the change. Last thing we'll talk about on the funds, I'm gonna send you to the back again, page seventy. Capital projects, this is a major fund, but I point, it's presented back here, the revenue expenditures compared to budget, so that's what we want to talk about. Again, the revenues, the only thing we got in revenues this year is the adjustment I told you about that we proposed to accrue some FEMA grant funds, and then some interest earnings, which are up this year because of higher rates. Capital outlay, expenditures of about three hundred and forty-six thousand this year, a hundred and fifty-one of that was the FEMA project, and then I think the next biggest thing was some work at Askins, Coolant Tower, I think, ended the year with a negative decrease in fund balance of a hundred and sixty thousand. Again, that was positive compared to the budget, but this is expected on the capital projects fund, as we spend down that money, it's gonna be, you get another big, big rig coming in or something.
Do I still understand that to say that we have three point eight to eight in the balance left, like currently? Well, as of the, as of the end of the audit.
Let me see, if, is that, I'm, let me get there.
It says actual fund balance is ending, is that what I'm reading?
That's, that would be right then, that would be right.
So we're still in fine shape there. Right, anticipated for us, right? That's, that's the little.
For the FEMA.
Part of that.
Yeah, that's correct. That's about it on, as far as what I want to bring to your attention on the funds. I do want to point out, send you back to the front, the very front this time, page ten and eleven, you know, we talk about the fund statement, that's what we budget to, what we operate by, and you really don't see these others probably but once a year when I'm here. These are the government-wide statements that are done on a full accrual basis, much like a business for-profit entity would be doing. This, page ten is the statement of net position, basically what we would call a balance sheet. It's got all your assets, your liabilities, got all the stuff in the funds are included here, maybe a little bit different, and there are some, there are some things here that are not included, that are not in the funds. Basically, what I wanted to point out to you, if you look at total assets up there, twenty-eight million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that was about thirty-one, in the prior year, thirty-one million, so a decrease in assets, total assets, but if you look up, there's, you see those about three lines that say net pension assets, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, million nine, so forth. Last year, that was like a million three and six point two, and I remember talking to y'all last year about those, and what that is, you know, that's where the state pension plan has more assets set aside than liabilities, which is a good thing. Now, I think we talked last year about, you know, part of that's driven by positive stock market, earnings in the market, that affect the, that affect the investments in the plan, and I think we talked last year, and it's usually about a year behind, year lag, the information that we're reporting on here is probably about a year old, so we kind of anticipated, and I think we mentioned last year, that that's gonna probably turn around, and it did. Still, still got a net asset, though, rather than a net liability, so I just wanted to bring out to y'all's attention, these are numbers that really, we don't have a whole lot of control of, y'all don't, you know, this is pretty much driven by the state, the plan, and this is what's been allocated to federal city schools portion, so, but just want to bring that to your attention, that that's kind of the reason for the decrease in assets, but again, still, it's net asset rather than net liability, so the state retirement plan is still appears to be in pretty good shape. Only other thing I'll point out, we talked about the funds and how this statement is different, you can get, you can get from the funds to this statement at the bottom of page twelve, kind of has a reconciliation to get from the fund balance sheet to the statement of net position and the adjustments that are made to get there. Lastly, page eleven is the statement of activities, this kind of goes along with the net position, this is done on a full accrual basis. All the things we talked about at the fund level impact this statement as well, so they're all still applicable. Now what, if you look down toward the bottom of the statement, you'll see a net increase in net assets for the year, million nine thirty-nine, you see that? That compares, last year, it was, that figure was about a three million, and so that's a decrease of about a million one from the figure last year. Now, what I just spent probably too much time talking about was the pension information, and that's really what's driving that decrease. The pension expense last year versus this year, that's about a million one difference, and really, it's because, you know, what goes through our books here, the fund level is the contributions we make to the state, and when you get over here, that may be or may not be higher, their actual expense computed on an actuarial basis is gonna be higher or lower than that number, okay? So that's the reason for the change. Again, probably got down into weeds with you, shouldn't have. All right, well, let's see, I think that's about all I have on this report, just quickly, we've got another book there, small book, this is the internal school funds. This is done on a whole nother basis of accounting that's prescribed by the state. Our audit, our opinion on this is unmodified as well, we feel like the statements are fairly presented in, on that basis of accounting. We'll point out, we also do a report on internal control and compliance, just like on the other one. We have one finding related to internal control, we always have this, this relates to segregation of duties because of small staff at the individual schools doesn't limit itself to really be able to segregate things the way you would like, but that's the only finding. We had a few more last year, those were corrected, not repeated, so, so, I think that's all I've got. Anybody have any questions? You come up with something later, feel free to call me, and we appreciate it, as always.
We appreciate so much what you do for the school system throughout the school year and audit, you know, this is a necessary part of our responsibility, it's law, but it's also a way to be accountable for the public funds we oversee. On page seven of the particular book, just make sure I'm understanding this, that we closed out the general fund, from a general fund perspective, we closed out FY twenty-one last year with a five fifty-two thousand dollar.
Yeah, FY twenty-two.
FY twenty-two, five hundred and fifty-two thousand to the positive.
Right, that was a positive.
And then we closed out FY twenty-three, forty-seven thousand to the positive.
Right, that was a positive, that was an increase in fund balance.
That's right, so two years running now, we've actually, you know, we're budgeting and we have a lot of concerns, but it's just another example of how, frankly, the management that our staff does to manage to budget and end up in a positive, not in a negative, so we budget very conservatively, and then I just think y'all are great stewards, our folks are very great stewards over the resources they have, and you love to see this at an audit time, you don't like to see negatives on your fund balance, you know, inevitably it's gonna happen occasionally on a year because of things within or beyond our control, but that's, that's an encouraging thing to me, so. All right, any comments or questions, board members? All right, thank you so much, we appreciate your professionalism, and I guess we'll get around in a few moments to accepting that. All right, our CFO, Ms. Williams.
I have the November's financial reports that were emailed out earlier today, the revenues and expenditures, and just ask, do you have any questions?
Appreciate those reports, but. Okay, committee reports, facilities and transportation, anything to.
There's no substantial reports since the last time we've met, had conversations, still no movement on our federal grant project, and nothing substantial other than constant repair of school buses, but that's part, parcel of the process, so everything's going smoothly, and we've got, so far, we've got an answer to every problem.
Super, all right.
Finance committee, we have, first of all, to approve the audit for the board for FY twenty-three. I would make that motion that we approved that audit that Mr. Jones just presented.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, we also need to approve the audit of the internal school funds for FY twenty-three, and I'd make a motion if you do so. You got a second, any discussion of those audits? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thus comes FY twenty-four, and so I would, I would make a motion that we enter into a contract with this, Hancock again, to do our audit for FY twenty-four.
Sure.
Okay, and I got, and that's, that would be for the, yes, contract for the Board of Education funds, yeah. I got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Uh-uh.
All right, anyone opposed, say no. And then I would also make a motion that we enter into a contract with them again to do our internal school funds audit for FY twenty-four.
Sure.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh-uh.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, and then we did have one budget amendment, number one, that was emailed out, is that in today's email? Which accounts for the ten million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, four eighty-eight and ninety-three cents that came as our portion of the bond issue that was done by the county, and so we have factored in those revenues into the budget, so we needed to make that amendment. This will, this will have to go to the city because this is a revenue, significant revenue increase for us, so make a motion, we approve capital budget amendment number one.
Sure.
And a second, okay, any discussion or question?
I have a question.
Yes.
This was on our, in our work session, but we just didn't get around to have an actual discussion, but the stay-hem lots, has that already been something we've quoted in, like at three seventy-five?
It's been, it was about three hundred when I checked on it, about two years ago, so I put an extra percentage on it just to make sure we have a conservative high estimate for if it's not stated.
If, yeah, that's, if it's. Okay. Yeah, and those are all listed at the bottom, the specific appropriations that would be anticipated in, from some of those funds. Hopefully, again, budgeting conservatively.
Very conservative.
Hopefully, we can get better deal. So we have a motion and a second on that, as I, unless I recall incorrectly, so all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Super, thank you very much. Insurance and policy has a long list tonight.
I have five policies.
Yes, ma'am.
So I move, we approve revised policy five point three zero five, family and medical leave on first reading.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
I move, we approve the revised policy four point six zero three, promotion and, promotion and retention on first reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right.
I move, we approve revised policy one point one zero five, school board legislative involvement on first reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
I move, we approve revised policy two point six zero one, fundraising activities on first reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Correct.
I move, we approve new policy two point eight zero five one, debit cards, credit cards, and credit lines on first reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great, all right, thank you. Y'all are the busiest committee of the, of the board, thank you for what you do, appreciate that. Mr. Jones, our superintendent is reporting.
Yes, sir, I would like to request that the board approve a trip for our high school FFA chapter, they're gonna attend the Tennessee Leadership Conference at Lakeview High School, I think the date's February second and third, and that being the type of trip it is, it would require board approval before they can proceed. The chaperones will be Emma Fritz, who's the FFA advisor, and Drew Goff.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Doesn't do.
The other item of business I have for this evening, I'd like to request an approval for Christmas bonuses for this year.
All right, certainly, we'll make that motion, all right? And it's in the budget.
Yeah, we think it's in the budget.
So we're in great shape, yeah.
We're in good shape for it.
All right.
Sure.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, well done, and those will be, is it, should I ask when they'll go out?
No, it's fine.
It's not a surprise at this point.
The tradition is the last full day before the break, so I believe that's the eighteenth, we'll deliver them to the schools for them, and it'll be for all licensed and certified and uncertified personnel staffs.
Super, all right, great. Okay, just a couple of things, we, we mentioned, great offsite on Friday morning, thank you and your staff for putting that together, and the great discussions we were able to have. We mentioned at that time doing some board meetings in the schools, so just kind of wanted to get that out there, that we want to rotate around a little bit, hit each of the schools at some point.
Yes, sir.
At a convenient, as convenient as it can be to host the board meeting, I think that would be great to see the schools, maybe that would be an opportunity to see, as, as Mr. Dodson mentioned, seeing the new cosmetology area, so if we don't see it in advance, maybe we can.
Certainly.
Have a little quick tour of that as well. Good, and you'll just tell us whenever.
Absolutely, probably February will be your first one, and we'll decide which school will go first in January.
Fantastic, all right. Speaking of January, the first Monday of January is January first, which is likely a bad time to schedule a board meeting, so.
Likely.
Should we bump it to the eighth, Monday the eighth at five o'clock, or should we seek another day?
I think that's good.
They work, they work five o'clock on the eighth. Okay, well then, let's go ahead and say five o'clock on Monday the eighth of January twenty twenty-four, that sounds striking to me. And can we also set a, a new board picture with our, with our new student rep and our new superintendent? It's a great picture down the hall, but it's, but we, we've changed a couple of people in that since our last one, if we could set that up for some time, and I know it's always crazy trying to get schedules worked out to be here in advance or stay late or something, but if we could, I think that'd be nice to.
We'll, we'll try to shoot for something, figuring out a way to do that, maybe on the eighth, and if not, we'll figure.
Yeah, yeah, not, not, just, not critical, just something, be nice to update. All right, any board member have any additional things for tonight? Mr. Alder, anything from the city board?
Behind Ralph Askins in Kiwanis Park, we're putting in two new basketball goals back there, so gonna be nice ones, too, so, thank you to the Kiwanis Club for going in fifty-fifty with us on that, so that'll be a nice addition back there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Redoing what there or putting?
No, no, new ones, taking down those old poles that are, kind of like telephone poles.
Right.
It's gonna be, it's over four grand for, for the ball goal, so.
The ones I'm there were eleven-foot goals instead of ten-foot.
They very well could be.
Still are.
I think they still are, yeah. They're really tall.
He was dunking, tearing the golf ball.
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, cool, thanks, that's great, great news. All right, well, if there's no other discussion, we will stay in the journey, we'll see you in the new year, happy holidays.
You're welcome.